Alright folks, we need to open up briefly to then go back to closed session. So I'm gonna go ahead and open up for closed session. So if you'll all rise to the platform. Mr. Rose, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our only closed session item tonight is student disciplinary matters. I do have to open that up for comment, so I will open up public comment for student disciplinary matters. Seeing nobody rushed to the podium, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn back for closed session. We'll be back at 6 o'clock. I would like to take the opportunity though to tell you that if you plan on speaking during public comment in the open regular session, if you could get a, thank you very much, get a yellow card right back there. Appreciate it. We'll see you in 15 minutes. Alright, I'm gonna recommunion the meeting of the Pedaluma Junior School Board of Education. If you would all again rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little housekeeping, if we could take our phones and put them on either vibrate stun or off. That would be good. Keep that on please. You guys, if you want, you can take that podium and put it underneath the table. If you'd like to do that, so you can see. Or you can lean against it if you want. What do you want?
Feel free to move it.
Go to you. Let me help her. You got it? We'll put it somewhere.
Alright.
Now we can see.
Item E, public hearings. We're gonna open up a public hearing. A public hearing is public input and consideration of the Board of Education increasing developer fees. Do I have anybody that wants to speak on behalf of either party for increasing development fees? We have to have these public hearings whenever we look to increase things. Seeing no one's here, that matter is closed. Let's move on to item F, adoption and approval of the agenda. Second. Any discussion changes, alterations? No? Okay, so we're gonna play it as it lies? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Moving on to item G, approval of the minutes. So we have minutes due from September 23rd and also from October 7th. I believe everyone is eligible here to go on those minutes. Okay, so let's start with September 23rd. Did you watch on that?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes, changes, questions? No? All those in favor of the 23rd?
Aye.
Close? Moving on to the seventh. So move. There's no charts to move or seventh. It's all free, so feel free to decide.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor of the minutes of October 7th?
Aye.
Aye, close? Okay, let's pass by those who aren't. Okay, let's move on to the fun part of the evening. It's all fun, but this is especially fun. We're gonna start with students from Grant Elementary School. Somebody here from Grant would like to introduce some students.
I'm just finding a spot out of the way, right here in the middle.
Wherever you want.
Okay. So I'm Katina Haugen. I'm the principal of Grant School. We love that we get to come share with you once a year about what's going on on our campus. I'm gonna let Katherine Heard, our sixth grade teacher, introduce her students and then they have some things to share with you.
Great, thank you. Good evening Board. I'm Katherine Heard. I'm the sixth grade teacher at Grant Elementary. And I'm gonna introduce my sixth graders, but also share with you how excited I am that this year we're going to implement a classroom composting program. So I'm especially proud of our sixth graders this year for putting that task in front of them. So last year, Phoebe's daughter, Lucy, we worked on lunchtime recycling program. So this year we're working on classroom composting to reduce waste and to create sustainable systems. So I'm real proud of them. So I wanna introduce Jet, Patrickine, and Shayla Buffau. Thank you.
Classes at Grant have already gone on many field trips. First grade went to the Tulane Fall Festival. Fourth grade hiked at the Blueberry. Second and third grade went to Ag Day. First grade went to the heirloom tomato festival. And kindergarten went on a shaped walk around the neighborhood. Tomorrow, second grade is going to the Tulane Fall Festival. And on Friday, fifth grade will be participating in the Age of Sale at the Turney Basin. And in November, sixth grade is going to Westminster Woods Course Challenge, Challenge Course.
A couple weeks ago, Grant had an ice cream social where all the teachers served ice cream to the kids and their families. Last week, we had the Jogathon where students collect pledges to raise money for the school. Everyone wore crazy socks and Grant School shirts, or the color green. Lots of parents come to help out and even run laps with the students. Also, last week, we participated in Walk and Roll to School Day. GLT, the Grant Leadership Team, stood outside the school in the morning handing out pencils and stickers to all the kids who walked and rolled to school. We ran out of room at the bike racks. We've had two author visits. Jolly Johnson wrote Mark of the Dragonfly. We invited some classes from near to join our fifth and sixth graders for this author visit. Kelly Light wrote Louise Loves Art. She shared her new book with kindergarten through third grade classes. Our librarian coordinated with these author visits with Copperfield.
We have one new teacher on the campus this year. She's one of our sixth grade teachers, Mrs. Friesen. She teaches all sixth graders science and shares a classroom with Mrs. Groh. That's all we've got this year for now. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
How many laps did you do running the Jogathon?
10.
17.
Hello, nice huh? Okay, thank you. Do you mind if we take a quick photos? We have one of our parents here. Take a picture. Katherine, over here. Turn around. Shayla, Katherine, ready.
Hey, wait.
One more.
Let the poor girl out. I don't want Mike Badley in the picture though. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand we have some student council items chart to here to walk.
Thank you for having us come this week and sharing with us our class. I'd like to introduce Ms. Leah Rosio, our sixth grade teacher. We're gonna talk a little bit about the units and the work environment.
So we started off the year with geometric design, which was a great way to learn about geometry. And then we went into geology, which we kicked off with a four day field trip to visit the caves in central California. And I learned a lot about what we're like in sixth grade camping. And they learned a lot about how far you can go. But we did, we had a great time in the caves. We went to three different ones. They were all very different. And then we studied volcanoes. And we've learned about how geology influences geography. And we're just kicking off our lesson on ancient Rome. And we're about tomorrow to learn about how geology and geography influence the founding of Rome. So we try and learn in a lot of different ways. We try and move and we try and sing. So we have a couple of songs to show you. So are you in your four groups?
No.
Can you get there quickly? Get five. Four. So are you gonna know where you're going? Stay by silence. Two.
Would it be easier if you came all the way up?
Maybe. Are you fine there? Yeah? Maybe?
It's okay.
You got it? Is that what it's like? You have very five, four, three, two, one? Alright, you said? Okay, you know what you're doing first? Cut it in your head? Mia, why don't you... Go over there. Okay, ready? Think of what you're doing first. Layers of the earth. Ready? One, two, three, four.
Yeah, uh-huh, you know what it is. Crust moving 'cause I played tectonics. Yeah, mantles like plastic. And the core is really dense and metallic. Memorize the song and you know everything about the crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle. Moving on down, there are two more layers called the outer core, inner core, outer core, inner core. Mister Lee's science teacher added again. Sick flow spitting that regurgitation. Ready to begin, so without further ado, I'mma hop up on those fresh feet so I can teach you about the layers of the earth. First things first, the outermost layer is called the crust filled with dirt and rocks and sand. I hope you understand, the crust is the layer on top of which we stand. It's made out of rocks, mostly igneous. Oceanic crust of dust and the skinniest. Six million of other crusts are in subduction, which might result in a volcano and eruption. Yeah, uh-huh, you know what it is. Crust moving 'cause I played tectonics. Yeah, mantles like plastic. And the core is really dense and metallic. Memorize the song and you know everything about the crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle. Moving on down, there are two more layers called the outer core, inner core, outer core, inner core. Go down to the ocean floor, you'll see that it is getting. New arc by process known as sea floor spreading. The continents fit together something like a puzzle. They're moving so slow like a center in a huddle. Used to be a supercontinent, Pangaea. Then they moved apart, continental drifts, Sia. Since the rocks move, there's a great amount of stress. Tension compression and shearing will be on the test. Yeah, uh-huh, you know what it is. Crust moving 'cause I played tectonics. Yeah, mantles like plastic. And the core is really dense and metallic. Memorize the song and you know everything about the crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle. Moving on down, there are two more layers called the outer core, inner core, outer core, inner core. When the rock breaks, there's a crack called a fault. Usually the plates are locked up like a vault. But when the stress builds up, the pressure's too great. The ground starts shaking because of an earthquake. Why do plates move? I hope you heard the lesson when I said it's from the heating of the mantle by convection. The track's running out. The only thing missing, the undercore's solid and the outer core's liquid. Yeah, uh-huh, you know what it is. Moving on down, there are two more layers called the outer core, inner core, outer core, inner core. Yeah, uh-huh, you know what it is. Crust moving 'cause I played tectonics. Yeah, mantles like plastic. And the core is really dense and metallic. Memorize the song and you know everything about the crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle, crust and mantle. Moving on down, there are two more layers called the outer core, inner core, outer core, inner core. Work hard, get smart, no excuses.
This next one's very short. Ready? One, two. First group over here?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Sing with thy heart. Like faithful friends. Sing love to deep heart. Sing friends together, may our love always remain. Yes, sing with thy heart. Sing love to dark heart. Say friends forever, may our love always be near. Yes, say friends together, may our love always remain. Yes, sing with thy heart. Sing words again. Say friends forever, may our love always be near. Yes, say friends together, may our love always remain. Yes, say friends together, may our love always remain.
We'd like to offer you a standing gift here.
Yeah.
Second Wednesday.
They're probably up for it, so you're...
That was pretty good. Thank you very much.
That's a tough act to follow.
That is.
Downhill from there.
We're gonna have Kennawood Junior High School and the Pedaluma Junior High School students come report on activities there. I just wanna give you a little, let's just give you a sort of a little logistics thing here. We've got three reports. We're gonna have that report, which we'll finish the first section of reports. We're gonna have the CSEA member recorder. And then we're gonna have a quick report on summer school. Thinking that we will break after...
CSE.
CSEA. For only those people that absolutely have to go home. We wanna encourage everybody to stay, but we also understand that it's dinnertime and school night. So let's see, we've got two more students coming in. We've got a CSE, a member of the quarter meeting, and then we'll do a little quick break. Just so you all know what's going on, okay? So let's go with Kennawood Junior High School. Are you here? Marty Coles.
Good evening. My name is Bennett Haly. I'm the assistant principal for Kennawood Junior High School. And it's my honor to introduce to you Mr. Jason Boyd, our student president.
Hello, my name is Jason Boyd, and I'm pleased to present you with the Kennawood Junior High School student report. These past couple of weeks have been quite eventful. Friday, October 3rd, was a pink day and the student body wore a lot of pink in support of us cancer awareness. During lunch on the 3rd, Miss Dunnigan received two pies in his face. Thanks to Pedaluma Junior High School's Ice Bucket Challenge. I was told to do pie challenge due to water conservation. This past Friday was Western Day, and this Thursday was a Purple Day in support of anti-voting. As far as athletics are concerned, our cross-country team continues to dominate the competition. The season wraps up next Thursday. The 23rd girls' basketball will be coming to an end next week. However, basketball, as the sport continues, as the boys begin practicing for their next season. Girls' volleyball will also start picking up at the end of next week, and we're looking forward to the new athletic seasons. Since the last board report, there have been some important adult events that have happened as well. The student grade, the seventh grade parent youth camp allowed mommy and uncle counselors and administrators sign the meet with seventh grade parents and inform them of all they resolve to offer at Kennawood. This was followed by coffee with the principal, as the parents who are interested in our school have a chance to meet with the administration and tour our campus. Kennawood looks forward to the next couple of weeks due to big events such as the Great California Shakeout, testing our school's emergency procedures, Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, concluding with the Red Ribbon Rally. An academic rally, the Halloween Dance, and last but not least, the biggest party of the year we go for all the students at Kennawood due to their fundraising efforts. The annual Pledgeathon, Pledgeathon has wrapped up, and students raised over $26 million. I mean, that's...
Who's gonna give you that job at Playa? You can have this.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kennawood Junior High School?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Emanueli, Assistant Principal at Kennawood Junior, and this is Hallie Starkey, one of our reps to the board. Yesterday, PJHS hosted 23 workshops during two sessions for comprehensive site teachers and administrators from KJHS, PJHS, CASA, Kennawood High, and alternative education schools. The workshops covered a range of topics of interest for junior high and high school teachers. Some titles were Google Classroom, Scientific Process, and Next Generation Science Standards, the Education and the Environment Initiative, Getting Busy for Learning and Teaching, Math Materials Review, and PCS One-to-One Initiative, World Cafe. It was an exciting day of learning and collaborating with these primarily teacher-facilitated workshops. Last Thursday and Friday, we continued our commitment to improving the school climate by training 40 new Safe School Ambassadors and providing a pressure training for our veteran ambassadors from last year. We now have a total of 16 ambassadors on campus, using their skills to intervene when they see different types of mistreatment such as exclusion, put-downs, intimidation, and unwanted touch occurring on campus. Ambassadors learn to use tools such as distraction, supporting, put-ups, balancing, and getting help to improve school climate, one action at a time, with this organic H1, Teach One program. Clubs are alive and well on our campus. While PJHS does not currently have Club Rush, as does Kennawood High, there are several lunchtime clubs students can participate in, such as the Acts of Kindness Clubs, Math Loafyads, Lunch Bunch, and Science Club. Students are also encouraged to create clubs based on their interests. In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, PJHS students are showing their Pink, What Think Pink Friday. Every Friday in October to support those we know who are battling breast cancer, Ms. Semick said that at lunch on the courtyard last week, it was a sea of pink. Many students joined it. Last week, PJHS had an assembly kickoff for our biggest fundraiser of the year. Funds came from the Great American Magazine and Cookie Dough Sales Fund for all PJHS students and can help fund industry activities throughout the year, including Seventh Grade Fund Day and Eighth Grade Under the Year School Trip. We recently recognized our current eighth graders for their second semester's seventh grade academic achievement. 160 students received a silver award, 3.0 to 3.9 GPA, and 60 students received the gold award for 4.0s during the second semester last year. Congratulations, students. The yearbook class is moving along smoothly. They chose the book cover for a few weeks ago and are learning how to design practice pages using the Jostens Yearbook Avenue website. Uric is very excited because they invested in six new cameras to replace the five-year-old cameras they were using before. Bantam Bites. The Bantam Buddies is a volunteer group of students interested in helping students new to the school feel comfortable. Buddies pair up with the new students at the beginning of the school day to show him or her to his or her classes. Tour the school and sit with them at break and lunch for the first two days. The Bantam Buddies check in with the new students a few weeks after to see how they are doing and if they have any questions. One-to-one at PJHS. PJHS, along with KJHS, Mary Collins School, Cherry Gully, and Crossroads, continue supporting students from 4C's learning to use, learning and use of technology with one or one Chromebooks. Chromebooks are used in most eighth grade math classes and many other subject areas, classes, as research and collaboration tools to enhance learning and ensure equal access to technology. We're all on a learning curve with one-to-one. Students and teachers and feedback, even with the challenges, is positive. PJHS Sports. PJHS seventh grade girls got their first win last week in an exciting comeback against Santa Rosa Middle School. Our eighth grade Lady Bantams are 5-2 currently with a four-game winning streak, taking an undefeated Slater Middle School earlier today. Our first year cross-country has seen a lot of kids improving their running times. Their league finals are on October 23rd at Spring Lake Park. But last but not least, our volleyball dance was held recently. This was one of the biggest dances we have had in a long time with about 275 students in attendance from our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Thanks for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Getting up from a group of people, especially with Cameron and Roma and Akron, is a difficult thing to do, whether you're talking or saying it. Y'all did a really fantastic job. Thank you very much for coming. We will appreciate it. Now, I would encourage you to stay. I beg you to stay. Oh, excuse me, that's right. Okay, very good. Loretta, what is it? Excuse me. Loretta, in eight years, how many times have I done that?
I will try. Sure. And you should see Loretta. It's gonna be... So it is my pleasure to welcome Loretta Cruz-Moggie, the former president of CSEA, to recognize the member of the quarter, and I believe have another announcement.
Yes, I think.
And it's a pleasure and privilege to work with you for the past few years as she moves on to some different things.
Different things.
I won't say it very better, but there's some different things that are going to happen.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and audience. As a round state, my name is Loretta Cruz-Moggie. It's been my honor to serve CSEA's Kennawood Chapter 212 for the past five years and nine months as president. I am now the past president. Tonight, I would like to, you need to count up here so you can get it. I would like to present my last CSEA member of the quarter to you. It's Carmen Fermetis. Carmen began work with our district as a bilingual assistant in October of 1990 at Valley Vista. She liked it so much, she's never left the school. In February of 2002, she became the senior school secretary, where she still works today. Now to share the wonderful reasons Carmen was chosen as our latest member of the quarter. Carmen has been the friendly face in the office for years and years. She supports parents, does everything for the staff, puts ice on kindergarten boo-boos, all the while being calm, friendly, and professional. Carmen deserves to be honored for her longevity, professionalism, and kindness. She also has an unending reserve of patience and is a wizard at multitasking. And she has fun, too. Please help me in congratulating Carmen Fermetis, our latest CSEA member of the quarter. I have a minute of class for you to commemorate this. And she chose a gift certificate from Della Fatoria. Thank you so much, Carmen. Everyone said I have one more announcement. I wanted to take, I've taken all the privilege here. I'd like to introduce Debbie Winkler. Come on up. She is the president of our chapter.
I'd just like to add one thing. Carmen successfully negotiated both of my children through Valley Vista. Which was quite a task, I'm sure. And I had to do the air math real quick, but you weren't there when I was there. I just, we just missed that. But I wanted to piggyback on Loretta's comment that you have always been wonderful down there. We have a lot of experience at Valley Vista with you specifically, and at least from the board and the assembly from my family. Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna take a quick break now for anybody who would like to go. We would love for you to stay. We hope you stay. However, those that would like to go home, get a bite to eat, do whatever, please do so. And as we do that, those who are standing, if you can come fill in, that'd be great too. Got a little bit more room in here if anybody likes to come in and sit down? Anyone? Alright, if I can just give last call to these guys for public comment. Do I have anybody else filling out a public comment card? Does anybody have one in their hand? They're filling them out right now? One, one? I need to put them in order properly, I'll give time. One, twice? Okay, have all the public comment cards now? Eric?
Yes, sir.
Tell us what's on.
Alright, well, thanks for having us. I'm presenting on behalf of the summer school staff, certificated and classified. I'm here with my esteemed colleague, Mary Lim, who has a portion of this presentation focused specifically on one of the great success stories of summer school, which was with our special ed students. And it's an exciting... And it's an exciting piece of information we have to share. So I picked this theme because it looked like summer. I think it's called summer. And Mary chimed in and said it looks like the Giants and... My other colleague thoughtfully mentioned that maybe it had to do with full inclusion of all students and diversity. I just thought it looked nice and looked like summer. So for the first time since two thousand and nine, Petaluma City Schools supported a summer school program. Small but important anecdote, I, along with David Sturrock, was selected to be principal in two thousand and nine, before the budget crashed. And so we were in May, planning for the summer session, and the rug got pulled out from under us and we weren't able to do it. So when the opportunity to become principal this year emerged, I jumped at the chance and I'm thrilled that I did it. And it is one of the proudest moments that I've had as an administrator in the district. So we're here to share with you some of the successes of the program and to look toward the future, two thousand and fifteen and beyond. So we began the summer session on June twenty-ninth, bringing teachers together from both Petaluma High School, CASA. We had a teacher from Petaluma Junior High and two teachers from outside the district who came in to work with us. We had one day to pull it all together. One of the first slides in my presentation that I showed them was this. It's a direct copy from that presentation. And the intent was to connect our work in summer school to the vision and purpose of Petaluma City Schools, to emphasize the important work that was to be done during summer. That is, to make sure that all of our students are college and career-ready and that we're working to close the achievement gap. I emphasize the importance that the student body during summer school, we're here for a second chance. In some cases, a third chance. This is a high-risk group who have experienced failure during school and had expressed initiative and desire to be there. They had applied and gotten in, and it was our job to give them a second chance. Obviously, it's an opportunity for credit recovery, to get kids back on track toward graduation. And not so obvious, but as it turned out, really important outcome of summer school is that it relieves stress on core academic classes in the master schedule. And I have some quotes from our head counselors at both the comprehensive secondary schools, Megan McClellan and Sharon Howell, who's here, who are very articulate on the point of the impact of summer school on the master schedule during the regular school year. So the size and scope of the program, I think in relative terms, compared to what we've done in the past, this was a pretty small program. Certainly, there is room to grow, and I hope that it does for reasons that I will show you. The program was reserved expressly for students who were in need of credit recovery, students grades nine through eleven, who were behind in credits toward graduation. We had eighteen certificated staff, sixteen teachers, some of whom may be in the room, again represented by Petaluma High and CASA primarily, two RSP case managers, Mary Lim being the lead, the other Kelly DeCosta from Petaluma High, who did outstanding work. They're really the heroes of the program. More on that later. We had nine classified staff, food services, custodial, secretaries, campus supervisors, and one-on-one aides, and more RSP support. We offered twenty-three sections in core academic subjects, English, math, world history, US history, physical science, biology, PE. And then we offered a very unique program called the Ninth Grade Bridge Academy, in which we enrolled about a section worth of kids, thirty-two finished. And this is an area of great promise and growth that I look forward to developing. I should point out at this point that we were received by staff at Petaluma High School with welcome and open arms. They were very hospitable to us and made every effort to make us feel at home there. So you've got teachers from both comprehensive sites coming together, some of whom have never worked together. You've got one day to pull it together. And you've got an extremely high-risk group of over three hundred kids. You've got to create a common culture. You've got to create a collaborative, professional environment in which to do that. So myself and staff, we created the Summer School Daily, which was a daily publication used primarily to create common dialogue amongst teachers and to showcase best practices. So I just want to share an example with you because it got a lot of positive feedback. So every day, I would go out, it was the funnest part of the job, visit classrooms most every day, snapping pictures of students and, in this case, actual curriculum, a final exam, which I write a small summary of what was going on in the classroom to show the teachers who otherwise weren't communicating with one another what everyone was up to. So here's an English assignment, very Common Core by Ben Gunter. Here's a great science assignment, wonderful picture of one of our senior students who graduated from biology class. Every day, we had an attendance report, keeping teachers mindful of the importance of encouraging students to continue to attend. We encourage students to take the survey, teachers to take the survey, all those sorts of details that allow school to function with as few questions as possible. Here's a great message from Mary Lim toward the end of the session. I just want to point out one thing she wrote to the staff. "I want to take the opportunity to tell you that it's been an honor and pleasure to work with all of you. You put your heart and soul in teaching the students. It's been really a great experience." Thank you. So that's from Mary at the end, which captures a little of the heart of the thing. So we started with three hundred and sixty-three students enrolled. You see a slight decline in enrollment over the course of the session. We ended with three hundred and eleven total. The bottom red is the Bridge Academy. That was our most high-risk group. We started with forty-six and end with thirty-five. Thirty-two finished with full credits in the program. So again, room to grow. We learned a lot there. We had eighty-six percent retention rate. I was told to expect seventy-five. The county graduation rate is eighty percent. So we feel like this is a success and really a tribute to the teachers and staff that supported students. So some of the details, three hundred and eleven high school students earned a total of two thousand six hundred and fifteen credits. So two-thirds of the students took both classes offered during a day and earned ten credits. About a third, ninety-nine, just took one class and earned five credits. Only fifteen students had an F. That's less than one-half of one percent, which is a tribute again to the teachers and to the students who came in and worked hard for five weeks after experiencing failure in the comprehensive sites. And thirty-two students finished the Bridge Program. These are eighth graders contributing to ninth grade, who before anyone else had five high school elective credits on their transcript, which is really exciting. And then just a comment to the board and to the room about the importance of maximizing resources during these times of budget stress. So a little simple math here. I did run this by Linda Shaley to make sure I wasn't inaccurate. I got her nod of approval. So we offered twenty-three summer school sections. We averaged at the end about nineteen students per class. So it's room to grow, but students do drop out during summer school, unfortunately. This is roughly equal to sixteen sections in a comprehensive high school if we average thirty-two students per class. In high school, during the comprehensive year, a section is approximately valued at fifteen thousand dollars. That's salary for a teacher and fringe benefits. So sixteen sections at fifteen thousand dollars is two hundred and forty thousand dollars, almost a quarter million dollars. It's very expensive. So we ran our summer school program, total personnel, certified and classified. I got the figure today at about eighty-one thousand bucks. So this is a lot of bang for the buck. And, you know, testimony from our head counselors. I asked Sharon and Megan to chime in on the value of summer school. I don't want to read it aloud, but what they say is that summer school obviously helps improve the graduation rate. It allows a certain amount of students to stay college-ready, A-through-G-ready. It creates opportunities for students to take electives, so it builds up our elective program. And it relieves stress on our counselors and our administrators as they're planning the master schedule, which is arguably the most challenging work any administrator does, any counseling team does at a comprehensive school. So the great success story of summer school. I'm gonna turn things over to Mary Lim, who you should know is a candidate at Sonoma State, working to become an administrator. And I think a very promising one at that.
Thank you, work, for listening. So just to give you guys a background, I'm not sure how much you know about RSP and special ed programs, but a normal case load for an RSP teacher is twenty-eight students. That's full-time. So for summer school, we had two RSP teachers and three aides, and we were looking at serving ninety-three students. Okay, so of course, we're looking at this with big eyes and going, okay, how can we do this? So we got really creative with our aides. We strategically pushed in in classes that were overly impacted with the RSP students and looked at the Bridge Academy, because that was a really high-risk group. And so with Eric's permission, I contacted Mentor Me Program, and they were awesome. They supported us by sending two mentors in to help us with the Bridge Academy. And that was a big, big help. So on this slide, it's showing that with the number of RSP students and the number of gen ed students, it was twenty-six percent of the population. So the slide that I'm most proud of is this went well the most. One of the slides that I'm proud of is this enrollment trend. As summer school progressed, students dropped out, but we maintained twenty-five percent of the population. So I was afraid that RSP was going to skew the statistics and, you know, show a big drop-off, but these kids were dedicated and they hung in there and they worked hard. So it was, it was really awesome to see them do that. Like Eric said, it was an eighty-six percent retention rate for summer school. Just as a point of comparison, graduation rate in the country is eighty percent. So these kids were hanging in there and doing what they needed to do to get back on track. The drop in general ed students was seventeen percent, but the drop in RSP students was only fourteen percent. So we win. So of the seventy-eight students that finished, only one of them didn't earn the credits that they enrolled in, which is phenomenal. It was just like, yes, you guys did it. It was awesome. On the survey, I was really, really happy and like screaming at Eric, "Look at the results," you know? Fifty-six said, yes, I would do summer school again. I would definitely choose this route to make up the credits and, you know, give up my summer vacation to get back on track. Only two said flat out no, and nine were like, eh, maybe. And so it was cool. It was very awesome that they got back on track. So we did the survey, and I wanted to share with you some of the comments. The first one I put on top, because I thought that was the best comment ever. "Her teaching ethic worked really well for me. I wish she could be my teacher for the rest of my high school experience." She is one of the only teachers, and this is copied and pasted, so their errors are theirs. She was only, she was one of the only teachers I ever liked. High praise for this population. It's awesome. And, oh, wait, one more. Sorry. I wanted to share with you the last thing, because everybody thinks, oh, five weeks to gain five credits? You know, how do they do that? The teachers really worked hard in covering all the curriculum. And this comment from the student, I thought, pointed out that they, the teachers went into detail about everything. There was no just giving the subject. It was all broken down and really easy to learn. Honestly, better than regular school. So more comments there. I like the one, "I love my teacher." It was great. So we'll let you guys see that. And then this is the part where I want to say the huge component of this success is due to the staff that was hired and their commitment to working with the students. And then also to the leadership. I mean, Eric really pulled us together, kept in on the communications, made it a lot of fun, you know, with your Nobel schedule and music. And it was, it was really different than regular school. So this portion is Eric's about the staff survey.
We didn't sing like live Oak students.
No.
We did end the day with music over the intercom. Yeah, so I did a staff survey at the very end of the session, asked a number of questions. But I thought this was where the rubber met the road. Would these teachers welcome the opportunity to come back? And we had three maybes, and eleven said yes, and one said no. I don't know who that person...
No, no, no answer. I think when she was hurrying doing the survey, she just forgot that question.
Forgot, okay. That's a good answer. So the point here is, folks, after this long hiatus, came back. They did great work, really important work that supports the vision of the district, most importantly, supports our students in helping them earn a diploma, which is the most important foundational step they can make toward opportunity. We have eleven staff members who are ready and willing to come back. This is the beginning of establishing summer school two thousand and fifteen. Some feedback from those teachers and other staff about things we could do better, which is really what I want to focus on now. We should, as a district, announce summer school earlier. We have a lot of students who did not commit because of the summer schedule, vacations and whatnot. More students will enroll, I'm certain, if we can announce in early spring. We have a lot of work to do developing the Bridge Academy. This transition, very critical transition for our most high-risk eighth grade, particularly into ninth grade. We're, based on this year, gonna have a very high percentage of RSP students. We should think very strategically about how to support them. So we're not working, we call it a triage during summer. And the staff did great, but we can plan accordingly. I think that we should streamline the teacher application process for our Petaluma City School teachers so that they have a, well, how to say it? Easier access, if they're qualified, to work here as opposed to teachers from outside the district. We need areas of access for all RSP staff and even our yard supervisors. That was a difficult point over summer. And then a number of teachers, I think thoughtfully, pointed out that a weekly meeting of all staff would really help create and encourage professional culture that's more cohesive, because folks never see each other during the day and yet share many of the same students. Also, a request was made, which I think is very reasonable, for a little extra time at the end of the day to grade work. And then, as everyone is pointing out, with the increased use of technology in the classroom, we need more support. And then, my favorite slide. Yeah, so these are Bridge kids the last day of school, and they wanted to say thank you. So... Yeah, so these are Bridge kids the last day of school, and they wanted to say thank you. So. I would. Sure, if there are questions, I'd love to try to respond.
Did you find yourself having to turn kids away because, you know, the logistics?
No, it was, it was open to anyone who.
No, no, because you didn't have enough support staff already, like, more people wanted to sign up than you could accommodate.
No, so we built the staff around sign-ups. So we got our total number of sign-ups, we set a cutoff date, and then I built the staff around sign-ups, based on the classes they requested and some of the RSP needs.
Yeah, we asked for extra help.
Really, to Jane's credit, as kids were applying for school, I would let her know, we need this many teachers, this much support, this much classified, and it grew.
Yeah, you were hiring up to like the third day before school was to open.
It was.
Yeah.
On the fly, like.
Yeah.
I mean, sounds the best way, but I like.
I was using all my, all my tools.
The next question would be, well, so you're doing some sort of needs assessment, and as they come in, you're prioritizing basically, like, okay, this one's a critical credit need or RSP need. So you're kind of with your own criteria, working through that way, right?
Yeah, and, and so I know, I know folks are eager here, but I, but it's really a critical point. So we see this twenty-six percent RSP, and Kelly and Mary immediately pull out all of the IEPs, they're over a whole table, and we start figuring out where the cohorts of these kids are, where, where are the pockets of RSP kids? And so they tasked all the RSP support staff to visit these classrooms to do daily check-ins. I'm confident that an RSP support person checked in with virtually every RSP student every day for five weeks to see how they were doing. And they were bumping around from two classes, three classes during every session. Every morning, there was a strategy meeting. I mean, they really did incredible work, way above and beyond what we could expect, and nothing I could have anticipated. So it's.
Neither did we.
Yeah. It's really a tribute to the dedication of staff to meeting students' unique learning needs.
I actually have a comment. I think that this ties in with the LCAP and what we, or the district leadership team put on going forward and what we were visiting it, but we need, definitely need to make sure, because it's a part of it, isn't it?
Yes, the summer school happened because of LCAP.
Right, we're right.
Because the district school, the district leadership team made summer school a priority within the supplemental funding.
Right. So now that, now that we recognize the value and, you know.
I hope it can grow.
Two other, two other little questions. During the summer, did you have the support that you needed from the district office?
Absolutely.
Tech support is an ongoing.
Yeah, so tech support is what it is.
But I mean, everything.
We get that, but yeah.
Airworks.
We were, we were supported from, from beginning all the way through. Anytime I picked up the phone, I got the support that I needed. Yeah, without a doubt.
And then, with regard to you were filling spots as students arrived, more demand for those jobs than spots available, less demand? Did you, were people lined up to take those spots, or did you have to recruit?
So, yeah, an important thing, it was hard to find math teachers. And without going into detail, I was told by a number of math teachers that they could earn more tutoring kids over summer privately than they could at, during the summer session. So again, without going into details, I'll leave that with you. And back to maximizing resources, I, I think that, yeah, maybe the writing's on the wall. Could we be more competitive and offer teachers, you know, what they would earn tutoring or close to it? Because I think that teachers want to be a part of this, and I think that teachers innately want to support students who are in the district, who are their own. That's the work that we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, just sort of on it, follow to that. How many teachers did you have to hire outside of the district?
Just two. Yeah, just two. And they both did exceptional work. They're from Santa Rosa.
And do you think a greater lead time would maybe?
Definitely. Yeah.
Yeah, because some of the teachers also shared positions because of vacations. So if they had known ahead of time, I think they would have been willing to work the whole session. But, you know, their schedule didn't allow that.
One more.
One more.
District question. Do we cover summer school costs for the district?
We had the cost.
Does that, does that mean certificating, outside everything?
Well, there was a small supply budget. I think we figured five thousand dollars, and we came in well under that. So we're.
Facilities, I think, did not always included in that number.
I can't speak to facilities costs. We didn't take the energy costs or anything, it was cycling, so. But personnel and supplies, we're, we're at around eighty-five thousand dollars. So a lot of bang for the buck. Yeah.
And sorry, and those kids enjoyed it and want to come back?
Yes. I mean, the, the survey shows it, but you could also see it on the kids' faces, and the teachers were really, really impressed with the kids and their attitudes.
Even, even now, the students that I have on my caseload that also participated in summer school, they are telling the other students, yeah, if you fail, you've got a chance in summer school, and it's not that bad. Yeah? So they're kind of recommending it to their fellow students.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, still there?
Me?
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. I've got two, I believe I counted twelve cards. I'm torn about reading the long intro on the public comment card, and I think I'm going to defer to not to do that, because I don't think there are a lot of people here that understand public comment and how that works, and I think it sets the wrong tone. So I will share with you that you all have five minutes, and I will call you up to speak in that order, and if somebody can grab the public comment card, let's get that back. So as we tried to do before, I'm going to do this little wave thing thirty seconds before the five minutes is up. I'm going to respect your five-minute time, but I'd ask you to respect the thirty seconds and try to wrap it up, okay? I really don't enjoy gabbling people off. I think that's unnecessary, so if you can, as a team, make that not happen, that'd be great. So let's start off with Denise Reyes.
Good evening. I'm Denise Reyes, and I've been teaching in this district for the last eighteen years. I have an eighth grader at Petaluma Junior High and a fifth grader at Grant. I'm here tonight to share my concern, both as a parent and as a teacher, about the district missing yet another opportunity at transparency with the public. At the last board meeting on September twenty-third, there was the public hearing regarding the, quote, "sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials." On September twelfth, Janas Cavedo put out a public notice stating, as in the past, citizens are urged to express their opinions at the public hearing to the Board of Education and the District Administration. To facilitate public involvement in the process, copies of this memo have been placed at the following locations: the District Administration Building, the Public Library, and City Hall. It's our hope that you will encourage others to pick up a copy of this memo, so that they may also make their opinions and feelings known to the Board of Education and District Administration. And there may have been one page of this paper at each site as well, as the page I have I got off the board in our staff room at Grant. I'm shocked that this is the only apparent effort that was made to involve the public on a subject as important as textbooks and their availability. Not only was the topic not very specific, but I read the words facilitating public involvement, and then saw that it was one sheet of paper posted at four public locations. With all the focus and push toward using digital communication in schools and using twenty-first century skills and technology, why was there no digital communication with parents at the very least? I can't speak for other people, but I don't frequent City Hall or the Public Library on a regular basis, and looking to the parent population who are not teachers or administrators, I doubt very much that they frequent the district office very often either. Also, district office hours are only from eight-thirty to four or four-thirty, when many parents are at work. Citizens should not have to come and pick up or search out information about a topic of this importance. The district should make it readily available in every way possible, specifically to the parent population of students in the Petaluma City School District. A truly transparent effort that could have showed that the district really wanted parents here, would have used every method of communication at their disposal. Notice about this meeting should have been on every marquee at every school, where any parent who drives by at any time of day could read it at no cost. It should have been copied and sent to every family. Through Ares, every school and the district has every known phone number and every known email address. Yet, as parents of students in this district, my husband and I did not receive a robocall or an email regarding this subject or the opportunity to come and speak or inform ourselves about this issue. As an eighth-grade parent, if I was not a teacher, I wouldn't have gotten the invitation to come and speak at that meeting about that very important subject, and I find that unacceptable. I get robocalls about suspicious characters in the neighborhood and emails about events going on in the schools. These are things that are viewed as important. It appears that the district didn't think that that meeting or the input that could have potentially been heard falls in the same category of importance. It's ironic to me that the textbook access, especially for the eighth graders of this district, and math in particular, as I reflect on Ms. Baines' heartfelt statements at the last meeting, seems to be centered on technology and not many paper books, yet the invitation to come and talk about it was not addressed using technology at all. I bet that there are a number of people, particularly, particularly, parents of eighth graders and students in eighth grade, that would have made the time to be here and be heard if they had been contacted with half the gusto of the fundraisers and other important events. This also sounds a lot like the LCAP solicitation of public input, for which there is very little, speaking from my own side. It's my hope that you, as board members, will question the district as to why the many no-cost avenues of communication were not used in facilitating public involvement, and that next time a public forum is needed, you will direct the district to use them to the fullest of their ability to truly facilitate public involvement and really hear what the citizens, parents, and students may or may not have to say. Thank you for your consideration.
Can we clarify the agenda item? Is that allowed under public comment? I know we can't have discussion.
I think we can ask.
But.
Was the item.
Well, it was on the regular agenda, but this is an item that's always on the agenda, not every meeting.
No, it's on once a year.
Because I think there's an issue, and stop me if I'm engaging in public comment, I'm not allowed to do.
You're allowed to talk.
But I, I walked away from that meeting feeling that people didn't understand what that item was. And so I think people thought it was something that pertained more to technology and whether you should have a book for a class or you should have a technology piece for the class. And that's actually something that's on every year, and my understanding is I don't think people understood what that item actually was.
But it was really vague.
Well, hold on, hold on.
Sorry. Hold on. So the sufficiency is a function of the Williams Act. And it is, it refers to the textbooks that have been adopted by the district and the sufficiency of those textbooks within the district. So it is focused on language, English Language Arts, math, history, social science, and science, those four areas. And we look at, are there sufficient textbooks, adopted textbooks within the district for those four areas only? And are they, we look at what has been adopted, because we have not been in an adoption cycle for the last eight years. So we are looking back to our old adoptions. We survey our principals to make sure that everybody has everything that they need from those old adoptions and fill in anything that is needed within the adoptions. It has nothing to do with upcoming adoptions or one-to-one programs or anything like that.
Or like your preference on whether you think the children should have a textbook versus using an ebook, right?
Ask clarifying questions.
That's clarifying question. It's not about whether, do you think math should be using a Chromebook or do you think they should be using a textbook? It's the textbook that we've adopted, does everybody have equal access to that textbook? It's on every year. It's a kind of a, one of those legalese things that we have to do.
Right.
It wasn't like a new issue on, should we all decide what classes need something? That's how I understand that law.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you. See, and there are some report cards. I'll give you the opportunity, I've got you, I think, two or three times. If you'd like to stay or come in, you call.
It's up to you. So I'd like to talk about elementary report cards. I brought copies of our minutes from the ERC that the district took, starting May ninth, showing that we brought this subject up. I was very concerned. We knew there were problems with Ares in the high school. We could project that was going to happen with report cards. I even talked about it with you when we came. To date, nothing has happened. We had an agreement that every site would have one person that was trained, extra training at each elementary site, that would be paid, I believe, the twenty-five dollar an hour rate, so that they would be onsite to help with report cards. Hasn't happened. There hasn't been anyone notified that I know. Last time I checked, a site principal has not even heard of this. I've been telling my site, because I was on ERC. Fourth grade hasn't seen their report cards. Report cards are less than a month away. Not realizing how much time teachers put in, elementary teachers put into report cards is insulting not to have them. I tried to find second grade again, I can't find it. We talked to Steve at ERC to realize for every decision you make, when you decided school-wide to implement an electronic report card, there would be reaction. For every action, there's a reaction. We need to be ready to support everybody to get the report cards out. Has knocked on them. So I'm asking you to get involved and make sure that what we agreed to in ERC, and we have three of them here, will be followed. Hopefully, she needs anywhere every time, but in case she don't, really all of that. Do you want me to stay or go?
I really want to be a mutual decision.
Well, then I'll take terms and let someone else come on.
Oh, there you are. You were in the back. And this is parent and Petaluma citizen in a working relationship report.
Right. I'm a retired Petaluma high school teacher. I worked for the district for twenty-six years, but as an English teacher and human interaction teacher, and I have many of your children. I'm here tonight because I've been pretty dismayed at the relationship that is, maybe even a non-existent relationship, that's been going on between the district and the negotiation for the teachers. I was here at the beginning of the economic downturn, and you, the district, approached the union with a proposal to work together through the economic hardships that were approaching. Your message to us, the union, was, you work with us, the district, and we will get through this, and in turn, we will work with you to reverse these hardships when the downturn is over. The union did agree to a number of concessions, mainly a loss of income due to reduced workdays and a significant increase in class size to further save money. And of course, it was understood that raises were out of the question. Teachers, counselors, certificated staff, all understood that this was best for students if we worked together to get through this economic crisis, and we willingly did it. We voted unanimously, if not, you know, not, maybe not unanimously, but very, very close to that, to support that decision, to get those things up. Everyone thought they were in a partnership with the district. However, now that the education funds are improving, you've refused to bargain in good faith. Not only have you refused to negotiate a fair contract with unions, but you have the audacity to approve raises and bonuses for the superintendent and his staff, and yet turn around and say there's no money for your teachers and counselors. The unions expect you to remember your agreements. You said it, you need to come forward. We worked with you, and they've struggled with doing more for less for years. It isn't necessary to create this adversarial situation under negotiations. The unions are not asking for the moon. One thing they're asking for is a reasonable raise after all these years without. They and their families should feel supported by the district, not attacked by the superintendent and the board. It's time you remember the agreements that you made. Come back to the bargaining table, forget about who's watching you at the bargaining table, and get down to business and do the right thing. Thank you.
Light, Austin. Am I reading this correctly? Light, Austin.
She had to go to a meeting.
Is there anybody else that is late for something that needs to get bumped up in the order?
We all have work to do.
As do we. Is there anybody who has an emergency, a family, a child home by themselves? No? No, keep the order busy. Matt? Sorry, I can't read this. Come on. Come on.
My name is Matt Camano, and I'm a Pedaluma native. It's my seventh year teaching in the district, and for the past five, I've had the pleasure of working at McKinley. I'm also one of the negotiators for the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers. I'm here to speak about observers during negotiations. Since I began negotiating in 2011, teachers and counselors have been permitted to observe negotiating sessions. Those observers did so in a civil manner. They did not assist with negotiating. They observed quietly. Essentially, each of those observers was a fly on the wall. Both the district and PFT did their bargaining with observers present. Some members observed because they liked to witness the negotiating process. What goes on at the table directly affects how they live their life, and they want to see what's going on. Some were interested in becoming a negotiator and want to see what it entails before making the commitment. Both types of observers were permitted before. Why aren't they now? In an August 25th email, Mr. Bowman informed staff members that Government Code 3549.1 prevents the public from attending negotiating sessions. That government code ends with unless the parties mutually agree otherwise. In the past, PFT members observed during negotiating sessions. This has been an accepted stance for many years by both sides. The district and PFT did their work at the table with observers present. The district did not ask for those members to leave the room during those occasions. Wild sudden, is this an issue? Were the observers ever unruly? Has the district ever negotiated or conversed with an observer during a session? The answer to both those questions is quite simply known. Minutes show that the members of the two negotiating sites are speaking, not the observers. The district stated that they would allow five members to observe if negotiating resumed. This is true. It is also true that the district stated that observers would not be allowed during the session during the following, following that one. Why? Agreements between the two sides have been made in the past with observers present. That can still happen. The district has been negotiating with, I'm sorry, the district has been negotiating with and only with the PFT negotiating team. That has not changed. Even with observers present, PFT is bargaining in good faith. So, going back to the last line of Government Code 3549.1, which reads unless the parties mutually agree otherwise, both sides have allowed observers during the negotiating sessions. Permitting members to observe negotiations is not a change in negotiating conditions. Prohibiting them is. I look forward to returning back to the table.
How about Genevieve Foster? Genevieve Foster? Jackie, is it Leavie?
It's Leavie.
Leavie, thank you.
Hi, I am here on behalf of 500-plus community members that have signed the change.org petition. Thank you. And I wanted to share with you some of the feedback that the community has given within the petition. But before I do that, I want to thank our teachers for their dedication and their sacrifice and their continued professionalism. So, these are a few of the more, shall I say, reserved comments. My teachers and kids are worth more than what they're getting. Fair wages for our educators, because they're helping teach the future leaders of the city, county, state, and country. Objectivity and collaboration are two foreign terms with this current board. Teachers need to be more valued. It's a nationwide issue. Pedaluma City Schools need to be leading the change rather than saying the district is too teacher-centric. Quality education for the kids in Pedaluma should be the most important priority in our community. We must insist that the board members and the superintendent have a close working relationship with our teachers and staff at all schools in the district. There seems to be a total disconnect. As a parent and as a community member, I'm deeply concerned. The very fact that we're at this impasse right now in contract negotiation speaks volumes about the level of dysfunction that's in this district. We, as the community, expect a culture change within the board and the top school administration. We want shared decision-making actively practiced. We want far greater outreach into the community. Current practices of posting a single notice at the library or administrative office, that's insufficient. And it sends a really clear message to the community about this administration's priorities around community participation. So, I invite the board and the administration to learn from current failures in leadership and make a much-needed course correction. The community wants a new model of governance based on shared decision-making, transparency, and accountability, one that serves and represents the interests of all key stakeholders, including and especially teachers. It can be done. It is being done in the old Adobe district. Why not Pedaluma?
Sandra will have you back for the budget.
For the budget?
Uh, budget.
Can we before we start just suggest that maybe we think about rearranging the room? There are people standing outside. Maybe the next meeting, you know that we're all coming back, so maybe the tables go, more chairs. Just a way to accommodate the community that's going to be impacted. One moment, please.
Did you want to instead move...
Could I respond to your memo and then come back to the budget? Because I have that on the table.
Do that.
First of all, we tried to send this electronically in the manner that you sent it to all our employees. We seem to be blocked from being able to do that. I will send our response to your memo to Ms. Merrill tomorrow. Hopefully, you will afford us the same courtesy of sending it to all certified, certificated employees. I almost said certified. Okay. Day, October 14th, 2014, to the Pedaluma School Board of Education. Subject, negotiation information. In response to your memorandum to our members dated October 13th, 2014, the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers is extremely disturbed that you would present such a one-sided view of the standstill in our negotiations. We believe this communication to be a direct violation of the Educational Employee Relations Act. Your comments regarding both the training of interest-based bargaining and the timeline of communications from the district are misleading on many levels. First, Mr. Bowman did suggest that we participate in interest-based bargaining training session, and our team did consider participating. However, after research and thoughtful consideration, we came to the conclusion that our participation would not be beneficial to our members. One of the key tenets of IVB, the program, is mutual trust and respect. The district's negotiating team has not demonstrated trust or respect to date. Therefore, we decided not to participate in the training. Notifying Mr. Bowman of our decision was our number-one agenda item for the July 7th session. You indicated the district had sent seven letters to the Federation requesting the resumption of negotiations. You made it appear as if the district was the only party requesting to return to the table. This is far from true. In addition, you did not mention that your terms of negotiation have not changed. Your offer is five of our members can observe one session. That is not acceptable. We are puzzled as to why administration finds our members, your employees, so threatening. You are asking our members to give away their right to observe negotiations. You are aware that if we agree to your terms, a new precedent will be set. To date, we have not seen any indication that the district is ready to bargain in good faith. We have listed our concerns and our extensive unfair labor practice that has been filed with the state. We have continually presented our concerns to you at the school board meetings. The district is involved in negotiations with two of its bargaining groups and has not been able to reach an agreement with either group. We would like to encourage the board to direct their representatives back to the table to truly negotiate in good faith without preset terms. We believe that our members quietly observing the negotiation process will benefit all parties. We look forward to settling this matter so that we can focus our energies on what we do best, educating children. Thank you.
I just want to ask, you said you couldn't send this out? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Do you not have, I was under the impression that the union had a group list for all its members.
We tried to use the same medium that you did. No, you sent it out Gmail, which pushed through all our phones. Second we got it, that pushes through to us. We wanted to use the same medium that you used, which was the Gmail.
I got it by Gmail. That was what we, that was, I just want to make sure. We sent this from a district board email.
Right.
Right?
It came through Gmail. Our employee, it came to our employee account.
Right.
We were not afforded the same courtesy of sending this to employee accounts.
But don't you have a group list of employee accounts?
No. No, we were not allowed to do that. We tried the group list in many different ways, and it came back blocked, even by sign.
But is that how you normally communicate with your members?
No.
No. So, you communicate with personal emails?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
But this was, I worked with someone who I said, what's going on? I've worked for over 20 years, and the school board has never sent a email like this.
We're trying to respond.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turco, maybe Turco.
Notes on it for me. I want to thank the parents who are here tonight showing their support. It's been really, really meaningful. But I would also bring up the topic about the memo that was sent out. And I want to remind everyone in the room here for whom this is incredibly inconvenient and tiresome and all these comments and all these meetings, because I've been to 99.9% of them since last summer. But I also want to remind, this is the only process we have legally. This is it. So, if this is an inconvenience, that's, we don't have a choice in the matter. Though, in that light, the memo that was sent out, it was very anonymous. And it was, I'd love to know who actually wrote it. I don't know what you mean when you use language in one sentence that talks about us asserting our rights. And then, in the same memo, use language that talks about how we're, and somehow implying that we're impeding the process by coming and questioning and wanting to be in the negotiations as quiet observers. So, which is it? I want to know, also, I also want to encourage you, would you please find a way, as Sandra said, to unblock the access to all of the employee accounts? If we, are you going to send out such a one-sided memo? We absolutely deserve the opportunity to respond and be able to reach as many teachers as you were able to reach through the employee email. And that's really all I wanted to say.
Comment about request to place items on the agenda regarding justification of teacher negotiations and two briefing. Cost of living, Pedaluma. You can read my handwriting well, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name is Brad Newell. I'm a parent of a student at McNear and at Pedaluma High School. And the reason I've come, this is my third meeting. I'm coming to support the teachers, because I believe that they deserve a raise. I believe they've earned a raise. And I believe that the current economic situation in this community warrants a healthy raise. At the last meeting, I asked that the board place on the agenda, and it's an appropriate request during public comment of the Brown Act, to place on the agenda an item for the board to hold a public session on its negotiating stance, so that parents can participate and be informed and understand why the district is taking this very hard-line negotiating strategy of keeping the observers out. I think the parents are an extremely important stakeholder in this situation, and I fear that we and our children are going to be the collateral damage as the board and the administration has this dispute with the union. I very much would like to understand why you're insisting that they do not have observers. It's an incredibly reasonable position, and it's apparently, as I've learned tonight, a historical precedent. There have been observers in the past. I don't understand why my request to place that on the agenda was not honored. It's not on tonight's agenda. Respectfully, I renew that request. So, Mr. Chair, would you please place that item on the agenda so parents can understand what's going on, so there can be some transparency? I'm making that request, and it's appropriate for you to acknowledge.
Acknowledge your request.
With a yes or a no?
We can't do that, though, because it's not an agenda item that other people would say, we discussed something that wasn't an agenda item. So, we can't.
It's appropriate under the Brown Act.
I'm acknowledging your request.
The second point that I asked you to put on the agenda was a briefing by the superintendent to inform the board, to educate the board, on the cost of living, so that the board could have some information as it negotiated this salary issue with the teachers. The cost of living has gone up. It's very onerous. I spoke to a teacher tonight, right before the meeting, and asked what an entry-level teacher made. About $39,000, I was told. That's pretty low in this community, and the cost of living. And that's before they have some chunk of their health care deducted. I don't know how much they have to pay. That's pretty tough. One of my best friends works at Trader Joe's. After four years of working at Trader Joe's, they're making $21.50 an hour. And they don't have to go to college or get a certificate. You know, I think we could pay our teachers better. So, I think it would be really informative for the district to have, for this board to have, a briefing on what it costs to live here. I think we should pay our teachers an appropriate salary to give them the privilege of living in the community where they teach. I don't think that's too much to ask. So, I don't see that item on the agenda, and I renew that request.
Acknowledge.
At the next meeting, I'm going to come and look at the agenda. And if I see that they're not on here, then I know what the answer is. And I will assume that the board isn't interested in being transparent with parents. And I will assume, correctly, again, that the board is interested in being educated about what it costs to live here. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have your stuff?
I have my stuff. I didn't get to walk my dog today, that's good. But, last year, we discovered that the district had estimated it would cost $500,000, half a million dollars, for step and column increases for certificated Richard teachers. We began discussing that money on April 10th, 2014, at a session. Go forward to September 9th. The former CEO of the district presented the unaudited actual report to the district. I made a copy of the slide, and we'll give that to you. In that, in June, they had the estimated cost for certificated salaries was going to be $30.8 million. The unaudited actual budget showed it to be $30.3 million. When I, that's $517,770 not spent on certificated salaries. The district then takes that money, rolled it over, and now it's one-time money that can't be used for certificated salaries. Why, is that a coincidence that the $500 and the $500,000? I really don't think so. But why can't the district use those monies that had already been designated for teacher salaries to support a fair raise? Let's be honest, we're $450,000 apart. That's it, 1.5%. So I hear online, we haven't found the money. We have found them, we have earnestly looked for the money. This isn't about money. I wish it was, we could find it. It's about so much more. The negotiation team took our task very seriously when we began negotiations. We took time to carefully examine the budget. It was always our intention to ask for what, only what we believe the district can afford. We are the same people who took every cut we were asked to take for six years. We have the best interest of the district at heart at all times. We came to the table with the expectation that both sides would negotiate in good faith. We genuinely looked for money that could be used for salary increases. It wasn't long before we realized that the district did not have the same goal. Apparently, your goal was to come into negotiations with a fixed amount with no intention of actually addressing specific concerns. You are not seeking to hear what we had found and work with the figures that we brought. They were just discounted. I will see you in impasse before you get to 4.5%. You don't know then, they'll want more. If you give them 5% this year, they're going to want more next year. That's what we were met with. And that really quickly let us know, this is not about money. You look surprised, but it's all in the unfair labor, so hopefully you read that. Thank you.
Here's the president, I'll get to wrap it up.
Closer.
Closer, yeah. Sorry, baseball term. Okay, closer's here. All right, so, good evening. I can't tell you, sorry, let me back up. Kim Sharp, President, Pedelema Federation of Teachers. I teach at Casa Grande High School. I also have two sons in the Pedelema City School System. I can't tell you how many drafts of this address that I went through, how many hours I spent thinking about the events that are continuing to occur, and how what I was crafting is a pretty unusual address, but I feel important. I never thought, after 22 years of teaching, that I would have to so many times justify exercising my rights and my professional judgment. I never thought that I would begin to not trust that the leadership of my district had the best interest of my colleagues and students at the heart of all they do. Even more disheartening is that I have to repeatedly plead for fair and equitable treatment of my members. I truly am heartsick with this. Last week, I attended the special board meeting. I and many who attended had questions about why there was an extra meeting call. When I expressed this need to the board that night, I was told that questions were not appropriate at that time, and I understood, there's rules, and that I needed to wait. First, let me say that I know that you can't respond to me in this forum. But I hope that what I ask, and that all that has been brought to you by certificated staff, community members, and parents of the last three and a half months has not fallen on deaf ears. My question, let me will begin. Why call a special board meeting and spend the entire time in closed session? What could have been discussed for almost two hours with no action taken? Why would the board feel compelled to contact my members directly with an inaccurate, one-sided, partial-truth memo the day before a board meeting? Why, after so many months of asking for help and dialogue to get back to the table, has the board clearly supported the district's position only? Why is the board only relying on the district administration for all of their information? Why is there no open communication about trouble in our district? Why did the board not act on the Level 4 grievance that was brought to them? Why are most agenda items so vague that no one, teachers, parents, nor community members, is really sure exactly what is being discussed and when? Most importantly, and if you hear anything I have to say tonight, I hope this one really stays with you and resonates with you. And this is the only question I will offer some response. I want each of you to ask yourselves this. Why do you think the teachers and certificated staff are engaged in such activities right now? Why would dedicated, hard-working, educated, and mostly irreplaceable employees take so much time to get your attention over and over and over again? I'll offer you some reasons that really aren't the answer. And again, just food for thought. Teachers are not doing this because we have nothing else to do. We're not doing this because we wish to make a circus out of the running of our district. Teachers are not engaged in union activities merely to have a pep rally. And we are certainly not doing this just because a few are upset with district mandates. You can't see my written speech, but all of these reasons I've offered to you are quotes from site and district administration about their employees. Could it be that the certificated staff needs to be heard? Could it be that there are some egregious flaws in communication in this district? Could it be that there is a lack of transparency? I'll end with this, which is, as I reviewed my addresses to the board, which haven't been many, because I think that more people need to speak than just the president. Trust is the easiest thing to break and the hardest thing to rebuild. As trustees, and I don't use that as a pun after just talking, sorry, it's an English teacher moment. I apologize. As trustees, your responsibility is to uphold the values of our district, of being open, of seeking dialogue with many different perspectives, and to communicate openly. What is demanded of the certificated staff should be reflected in the leadership of the district. Again, I am heartsick that this is not the case. Please work with us and not against us. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. We're taking a five-minute break. Love to have you stay.
Oh, for you. All right. I can hear it from the machine. Thanks for making the, a little lumpy.
Appreciate being.
Whenever we can, right?
Item J, report of activities. Looks like a site visit to Live Oak and varsity soccer and varsity football games. I will note that the Pedelema High School homecoming was this week. I don't know and I should know Casa Grande, can anybody help me out? Is it the following?
I think it's probably. Yeah. Okay.
Very good. Item K, agenda approval, consent agenda by consolidated motion. I'll take a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, go with the consent agenda. Aye, opposed. L2, the revised board meeting calendar. Take a motion.
So moved.
I'll take a second.
Second.
Can I get some of this guy?
Yeah, shared at the last meeting. The meeting in March was put at the 3rd Tuesday. We only have one meeting in the month because of spring break. And it's too late to take action on the second interim report. So we're asking that we go back to the traditional second day, second Tuesday. And there'll be several weeks between that meeting and the first meeting in April. But it's imperative that we have a meeting prior to the 15th of March to take action on the second interim report.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions regarding that? Can we make sure that that gets posted correctly, prominently? So that it's one of those dates.
It can be revised.
Okay, and that is on the board, excuse me, what's that?
It'll be, it'll be posted.
It will be posted, if it looks accurate. All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Item 5-0. Ooh, this is a dangerous one. Nominations, item three, nominations for the Sonoma County Committee on School District Organization.
Second. I can actually talk to this one.
Would you?
Yes.
Let's do it.
So I'm on this committee. I'm not up for reelection this particular time. And the person who has expressed an interest, Jeremy Broad, I believe he's at Bennett Valley, I don't remember for sure, has been on the committee. And although we don't always agree, he's very thoughtful and a good member. So I wouldn't want to bring anybody to run against him because he's done an excellent job.
All right.
And you're still on the committee, so you can bring us information. And what does the committee do?
So this is the committee, it's through the county office of ed, that if there's going to be a change of boundary between districts. If we had a hearing, you know, Gurnville and Montreal had discussed combining. It comes to that committee. We have public hearings and all that stuff. Or if a developer goes in and they want to rearrange alliance so that the students are all in the same school district in case the development crosses two districts. That kind of thing.
Not to put you on the spot, just like you're asking, do you recall last time that actually a district was changed?
Yes.
What was that?
Oh, golly, I don't remember how long I've been on that. It was sometime within the last five, six years. I can't remember the exact.
All of them.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, it was, the last one was developer situation.
Was.
Yeah, request in city.
Has anyone else expressed an interest in running?
Not that I have heard. I know that at one point I had encouraged, you know, somebody else to run just because, for one of the open spots that wasn't this one. Just because it's hard to get people that have that knowledge to go an extra, two meetings every year.
Okay. Got a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item 4, Resolution 1415-14. Resolution 1415-14, the Board of Education, Pedelema City Elementary and Pedelema Joint Union High School Districts, County, Sonoma, State of California, 2014, Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Excuse me, everything else. Red Ribbon Week proclamation. I'll take a motion. I'll take a second. Do I have?
Just that October 23rd through the 31st is Red Ribbon Week. And we're asking the board to take, pass the proclamation to recognize Red Ribbon Week for us. It is that, and the campus staying in tonight.
rapidly recognize it? Can we, can we recognize it with a request for renaming of it? Generally, we have somebody that comes here and tells us to speak to it. We don't have.
It's. 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 It doesn't do it anymore.
Yeah, I don't think it was your last year.
All right, well, it's a, we're into discussion now. Extremely worthwhile pause, and we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. On that, discussion on the Williams Quarterly Report.
Just on the, in the agenda, there were no claims or any complaints in the last quarter.
That's just a special item. That does not require a motion. I'm working my way through business. I'll do myself over to item six, purchase orders. And I'll ask members of the board, if anybody needs to recuse themselves. I'll take some local business on this here.
Or not from six.
Not from six?
I'm going to change to six and seven.
Six and seven, you're out of six and seven, and you're going to be out on seven?
Should I make a motion to discuss this?
Will we get there? I just want to see those plans first. So item six, I will take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay. And I think on item six, what was that? You're only six, so there's four, unless you're going to motion a second. Any discussion on the purchase orders? You have a question, did you get?
Item six, Ben.
Oh, okay. All right, so, discussion, all those in favor of the purchase orders that's presented?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And we have one extension, so that's four on one six. Moving on, item seven, a list of expenditures. Sure, it's going to have to.
Second.
There you go. Any discussion on those?
I did have a question about a expenditure for.
North Bay Laborers.
Bay Laborers.
Large expenditures, Steve, $145,000.
Correct, that's part of the apprenticeship program operated under the Adult Education Program. So we receive funds for that, and then we pass a portion of those funds on to that organization.
All right, are you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Now, Steve, that's been going on for a while.
Yes, we've been operating apprentice programs for longer than I've been in the district.
So, Sue, that's a 3-0-2. But you probably already knew that. Item eight, bid authorization for bid 0814 for Casa Grande Covered Walkway.
So the new modular program or project at Casa Grande will require a walkway extension to the arwing. We're hoping to do it as, as a change order to the previously approved site work. DSA has let us know that they don't agree that it's a change order. They think it's a separate project.
Now, why would they do that? I'm just curious, why would they?
Because it's, it's not attached to the facilities that are being placed there. So.
Do they get like a percentage of their time?
We do. But it's based on a dollar amount, so it doesn't increase by it being a separate project unless the cost of the project increases. But we do pay DSA a percentage.
We do.
So our architect had desired to submit it as a change order, and now it's a separate project, and we're asking authorization to put it on that.
I got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item nine, award of bid 0514 to Cars Construction Service in the amount of $220,900 via secondary capital facility funds. Casa Grande High School Special Education Modular Building Site Work, Superintendent, further authorized to approve change orders up to 10%, except the work being completed.
So moved. Second.
So this is the site work, including bringing plumbing and electrical are the expensive components to the site work. We, the board had previously approved the facilities that will be placed on the site work once it's concluded.
And Steve, remind me, is this part of us taking back services that we previously?
This is correct. This is to accommodate the special education classrooms that we took back from Sonoma County Office of Education. And so over time, and in the general fund, we'll see significant savings from this action. Again, these are not general fund expenditures, so they're not funds that are available for consideration in negotiations. They're only available for capital facility projects such as placing facilities on campuses.
But they should save us some general fund.
It will save us a general fund in the future, correct.
Have we dealt with Cars before?
Yes, he's, he did all the site and project at Casa Grande and a number of projects in the district. Done excellent work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item 10, award of bid number 0714 to Murray Building, Inc., in the amount of $409,000 via bond funds. That would be for Pedelema High School bleeder and gym floor replacement. That would be for Pelham High School bleaching gym floor replacement phase two, and also superintendent be authorized to approve change orders up to ten percent, acceptable for being completed. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Steve, you want to talk about?
So we went up, last year, as you recall, we did the, the floor for the gym. Under one DSA program, we had the floor and the bleachers. So now we're going back to the bleachers. It requires eight additional doors to be added. And I think the board's aware of the revised plans for the gymnasium. We did open bids last week, and we had the low bid in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand dollars. Before you today, we had a number of bidders that you saw on the recap sheet. Is there, there might be somebody here who has questions in regards to this.
Sure.
Not a question, I am Murray, I'm the representative.
Oh. The boots kind of gave it away, I thought maybe.
Yes, if you look at the.
Thought maybe.
This is a bond project.
Correct.
And if you look at the bond program.
This was in line with them.
Is this same company putting the floor or?
No.
Different company?
Correct. And the company that did the floor will come back and refinish the floor after this project.
Steve, a couple of questions. One is, is this overall going to shrink that gym capacity, or will it be capacity neutral when it get done?
It will decrease the capacity. The issue with the gymnasium is that it doesn't meet current standards for.
I remember when I was through that with the floor.
So it, so by virtue of adding the eight doors, and it will cut out a section of bleachers, plus new bleachers require steps, as opposed to just walking up the benches. All of those things will decrease the capacity of the gymnasium.
By what? I mean, preceding capacity, ten percent, fifteen percent?
It'll probably be in excess of ten percent.
Do we know what the end number is going to be?
Do you recall what the capacity of the bleachers are?
I have nothing, I don't have a head, but I also have no idea of your current capacities.
Right. Quick question, both of them.
It's important for a couple reasons. One is to host NCS events, there's certain minimum capacities.
And.
So we all make sure they're within that.
Within that.
First thing. The second thing, you might want to start thinking about how you're going to juxtapose the, the fieldhouse that maybe, you know, to, to be able to maximize if they have assemblies in there, because the entire school assembles in that. Unless they're going to start doing it in that music hall, when that gets built, you could run into some problems there. So I mean, it's always easy to say, let's do this, let's do that.
For assemblies, they use the floor as well as, as the bleachers, so.
But still, there's a capacity.
Yeah.
You know? And it goes to fire, there's going to be, you're going to put so many people in a building at a time safely, regardless of any doors you have.
Yeah, I believe they can accommodate for assemblies, the entire student body in the gymnasium, even as we configure.
Okay, another point to Troy's jab, which I thought was a good one about the floor. I, as I recall, no one really took ownership on our side of who was really responsible for that. Well, that's, hold on for a second. There was a lot of, you know, you, 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 and then everybody's looking around. And the end result is, is kind of what happens when that happens. So I'm wondering, who are we, as we start these bond projects? Who are we designated as our facilities coordinator? Is it the onsite administrator? Do we have a district facilities, a construction management guy, coordinator, I mean, somebody that can work with, we'll use Murray, for example. So, you know, it's real consistent information with a knowledgeable person on our side.
Right.
Without disrespect.
We use Counterpoint Construction as our facility management firm.
Not Counterpoint, or is it the same company?
Counterpoint, yeah, Counterpoint.
That's same.
And they, do we use them on the floor or no?
We did on the floor, and, and that's why the same company, that's why the company is coming back, and they're doing the restriping and everything for free. The refinishing part is required, and, you know, we've been having discussions with the company that did the floor since it's gone down. And at one time, we're going to have it done this last summer. The problem is, why have it done last summer, and we're reconstructing it next year? And obviously, by putting in bleachers, there's going to be need for them to come in and refinish the floor at that time. So we put it off a year. But we did address that issue with the company that put the floor down.
Well, good, because on our side, I mean, you know, I'm not going to speak for the Murray group, but any contractor, they, they want one voice of direction or control or.
Right.
Because you start putting too many in, it gets confusing, and it becomes change orders and costly, and you run into mistakes.
So school construction is unique in that the architects, under state law, because of DSA and the fact that architects are responsible for meeting Title Twenty-four, have more responsibility for construction management than they do in the private sector. And that's just a requirement of law. So we have the architect that has basically construction management built into their contracts that we have. It's one of the reasons we see escalated costs for architectural services. And then we have a CM, construction management company, that's overseeing the entire project, like you talked about, and responsible for making sure that the architect, inspectors, the contractor, everyone's doing their job, and the project's completed on time, and hopefully within budget.
And hopefully better than the floor project.
Correct, but again, we didn't accept, we'd never accepted the floor project.
Yeah, no, I know, but, all right. Thanks for answering the questions.
Any presentation?
Not going in on the floor project. Got a vacation over there.
Any presentation from Murray, Inc., or?
I was just here in case there were questions.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think we've asked those questions, so I'm going to set to find my spot again. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I guess I did have one question, what's timing on this?
We're starting.
I don't know why I'm asking you, what's timing on this?
We actually, it's starting now so that the difference on the bleachers can all be taken care of, and I believe we're supposed to be complete by June. I think we start in March, and we're supposed to be complete by June. It's an odd, it's, yeah.
Yeah, they're starting in March, right after volleyball, basketball season. As soon as that's over, then they go into the construction project, and we wanted it done before school starts, obviously, and then, so the date is.
Yeah, might be July.
I think it's, I think it's in July.
It's not an obvious completion date.
And I'm sorry, I know that we already voted on this, but I have one other, because it just sort of occurred to me, we don't have a Casa Grande problem with visitors' bleachers on these, right? These are California-approved.
Correct.
DSA.
Correct.
Off the shelf, blessed and.
Well, the issue is.
For the long bleachers.
The reason for the long bleed time is because the bleachers will be constructed specifically for the gymnasium. But we have DSA plans and, you know.
Approved.
They'll be.
Good to go.
Yes.
Okay. We had a seven-year project?
Yeah, in reality, we're still working on final.
I didn't want to know that.
On that.
We should have.
We're both still, I believe, but, yes.
All right, very good. So we have a motion and a vote, and we're good on our sues. I have a, moving to resolution fourteen fifteen fifteen, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary and Pelham Joint Union High Schools, authorize designated personnel assigned contract and agreement vacance for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen.
So moved.
This is item four eleven.
Oh, okay, sorry. Got it. Okay.
So this is to add.
Thank you.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Ray Poole as the interim CBO. This is to add her as a signer for contracts, replacing Midge on the board authorization, so that the three signers are right here in regards to contracts for the district.
Okay.
And official papers.
Did anybody ask Ray if Ray wanted?
No.
You're in, Ray. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Fastest five oh. All right, we have a public hearing on fourteen fifteen sixteen, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, increasing school facility fees and residential commercial industrial projects pursuant to government code section six five ninety-nine.
So moved. Second.
I'm going to need a discussion on the public hearing, I don't know if we spoke to it.
Correct, and you saw the rates, and they're allowed by separate allocation.
Let's go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, let's hear the last one, would be corporate account revision authorization with Bank of America. So.
So moved.
It's, it's the same issue, that this was an account that Midge was a signer on, and we need to eliminate her as a signer in January. We're not adding you this.
No, you're going to be the sole.
Great. Okay, so we only have one, one account at this time.
Oh, and Jane, right? Jane is I.
Are we adding Jane?
Yeah, we saw it there, but.
Never mind, that's what I thought, we're adding, that's good. Yeah, we're adding Jane.
Yeah, that's.
And eliminating.
We have to have two signers.
Yep.
Is it Jane's credit card we're canceling, I hope?
It's the opposite.
A quick question, though, Steve, or just a point of order, Steve. I think it's kind of prudent, when you're dealing with accounts and stuff, to always just put the last four numbers like they did with the credit card, because how many people get access to this? And it just makes it that much easier to, you know.
Okay.
Grab it online, and Bank of America, and start writing, start making checks, and there's a lot of people that do that kind of stuff, you know, hackers and stuff. I think as a rule, we probably should just ending in, and I think that's sufficient enough.
Not show the.
Not show the document, yeah.
Good point. Excellent point.
All right, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did I have any discussion on items fourteen through seventeen, with some amended policies and bylaws, first readings? The discussion amongst the board. Okay.
I'm sorry, I just have a general question. How does that work, Steve? So this is the first reading, and then we.
If there's any questions or adjustments, we'll make them between now and the next reading, and then the board has a second reading to approve.
Just in talking about the local control and accountability plan, in reading through the board policy, it discussed, you know, getting input from, it came up tonight in the meeting, getting input from parents and teachers and students, and so I don't know if we can lay that out more in more detail in the board policy.
Yeah, last year was inconsistent from school to school, and I'll take responsibility for not getting to them as to how they're going to put it out. Some schools put it out on a robocall, some schools put it out, you know, just on the table, others put it, was a handout or sent out to the parents. But the issue that we had was very common throughout the state, that even the local control accountability plan was put in place for, to gather parent input, there wasn't a lot of parents rushing to provide input to the LCAPs across the state. And we did have parents participate in the process to develop.
We made an effort to make sure that we.
We'll look at doing a district-wide robocall next year.
Yeah, well, and we'll have, we'll have a hearing next spring.
Right.
So we will do a much better job of getting that out, there's parents.
Can we just ask? People, what would be a good way to get more parents involved and teachers, and I mean, I'm.
Why don't you make that phone call, and I want you to report activity.
Okay, good.
Because I just think we've heard it, and it's a big part of our.
It's fine.
School district plan, so we should get, I mean, we're not guaranteeing we're going to get more people to attend the meeting, but let's put it out there.
Yep. So you got that. You got that? Thank you.
All right, self-interviewed annual report from Resit, we have a discussion items on that. I am interested in the discussion on the next item nineteen, inter-district enrollment report. So, have you thought about that?
Yes, if you want to turn to that.
Do you want to have a gas over there?
Here, I'll share the document with you.
Sorry.
So, this is a great opportunity to just go through the inter-district transfers. And we've, you know, we shared when we were looking at our enrollment, that we're not at the same level that we had anticipated. So when you're looking at the transfer, incoming transfers in, we had five hundred and twelve, outgoing transfers of two hundred and seventy-one.
How does that compare with prior years?
Two years ago, we were plus four hundred. So you can see, you know, where.
About this.
How much?
Two forty-ish?
Yeah.
Forty-one?
Two forty-one.
Yeah.
So that's a hundred and sixty students less than, than we had in the past, and you can see where our students are coming from and going to. Most, most districts, we have a positive inter-district transfers, more in than out. There are some that, that we have negatives, and that's on the second page. You can see the number of incoming by district and outgoing. I can share with you that some districts are making it more difficult for parents to transfer out. Catati Runar Park and Cinnabar Bean Two, where they request, or they request, but they make it sound like a requirement, that to get an inter-district transfer, you have to come in and meet with the superintendent.
I'm shocked to see at the movies advertisements for schools.
Yeah, I've heard that that's.
In the newspaper, I mean, the little thing before the movie starts, come to our schools, is it, you know, it's.
It's a very, it's very competitive. And it has been for some time. So that's something that we need to be aware of.
To stay in finance, we said.
But again, we're still a district where people choose to transfer in, in much greater numbers than they choose to transfer out. But we need to continue to work on, you know, the image of the district moving forward. The school, when you're looking at charter schools, these are numbers that aren't reflected because they're not formally inter-district transfers, they don't, remember, charter school has no district boundaries. So we have additional sixty-one students going to, going to charter schools.
What page do you want to see?
Uh, the, oh, excuse me, I'm, there's a sixth grade academy, where the students are coming from to go to the sixth grade academy. And most of them, you can see, are in our district, but we do draw a number of students from outside our district for the sixty-one. So I think that's the third page.
About third page.
The fourth page is showing Pengrove, and where people are transferring into that. So when you're looking at Pengrove, we have, you know, a hundred and seventy-eight students. Remember, it's a charter school in Larn, so McKinley McDowell, that's the old Pengrove tenants area, so don't, you know, the students are transferring out. But Pengrove's a tenants area, it's now the state of California, so the former tenants area, it's stayed within our elementary district, becomes McKinley McDowell. They're not transferring in, they're continuing to go to Pengrove, but they are treated as, you know, a hundred and seventy-one students from the McKinley McDowell, the new McKinley McDowell tenants area. But as you can see, if it was not for, there's more students from outside our district than from inside our district attending that school. And there's, there's not that many people, there's not that many school age, elementary age children who live in the Pengrove area. So if they were just drawing from their tenants area, it would be a very small elementary school, the smallest elementary school in the district.
So somehow Catati Runar Park was able to restrict and deny transfers, at least on a go-forward basis or in a state, I know they did at one point, or they tried to.
They're trying to, that's why we, I mean.
We're pretty risk there, right? A hundred and seventy-one kids coming. 171 kids coming in?
Well, we made it a charter, so they, so they can't allow that.
They can't deny.
That's, and, you know, the desire isn't, and legislators have taken action to make it easier for parents to select where their children attend school, and, you know, districts are attempting to make it more difficult.
Sure, it's like changing something.
Correct. That's, so Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley, again, you can see that the majority of those students come from our tenants area, but still, a significant number of students who are transferring in from outside the area. And again, Mary Collins School was a K-six school, the smallest school in the district at the time, and they were going to go below 200, so now you can see, of course, they're K-eight now, you can see that their numbers are over 400.
How soon, so, I'm just looking at that, so Valley Vista, 46 kids attend Cherry Valley that are technically in the Valley Vista school?
Correct, and those schools are really close together, though. The kids across the street on...
On...
Because, but could Valley Vista technically have 46 more kids there?
Yes, Valley Vista has plenty of space at the center to accommodate the students.
Interesting.
And then employment-related, so, basically, these are people who work in our community and bring their kids with them into our schools, it's 78, and you can see, they use this even to just transfer, you know, across town as, as a restaurant. They have a higher priority than just a typical, a regular inter-district transfer.
So you have somebody who works in, who lives in Berkeley, works here and brings their child to school here?
Correct.
Wow.
Okay.
And then our students attending area charter schools, this is, this is a real growing population, and it's really not factored into that other side as much, so you can see we have 333 students going to other charter schools, that's not part of that inter, inter, inter-district transfers in and out. And you can see, Live Oak Charter, we have 107 students going. Significant number of those students are from the McKinley attendance area because they share the ten, same attendance area, you know, one at the fairground, one across the street on L Street. And then St. Vincent's, we, you know, just trying to find out where the students are, so the number of students within our high school district attending St. Vincent's high is 201, and the elementary, it's approximately 82, the registrar could give us an exact number, but, you know, you would expect some of our parents to be placing students in private schools as opposed to public schools, so that's the number going to the largest private school in Padilla.
Okay.
So are there any questions? We're going, we're just...
Can we get a year, can we get a year to year on that? Maybe not as detailed?
Yeah, and, and I just asked that from Debbie at last year's member, and I don't think we had charter schools quite as detailed last year as we do this year.
Well, there's more charters.
There's more charters, and we're getting more accustomed to trying to track those kids so that we really know where, where students are going.
Well, we have more charters than Old Adobe is, aren't they all chartered?
So La Cera is not.
Okay.
The rest of their schools are all K, and that's another issue. Their state charter authorizations for K, they're operating as K-sixes, and they don't have any intention in the near term to change K. One number that we're missing out, we'll try to find, is the fact that Cinnabar is K, and they're operating for the second year, seventh and eighth grade program. And so we need more information on, on that.
It would also be helpful then to have a, we, we've talked about the sixth grades, all the feeder districts prepared for the junior highs here, we will also need to then think about the eighth graders that would be at Cinnabar or other places in preparation for high schools if they choose to.
Correct, because now, not only Mary Collins and Live Oak, we have Cinnabar, eighth graders coming to, and not likely coming to one of our two high schools.
Right, right, so that's it.
Jane and I have reached out to South County superintendents in regards to integrated math and integrated science, because those are really sixth through eighth grade programs, and desire to try to, to have their teachers attend some South County training so that they know what, what our expectations are is for sixth graders, so there's a more consistent educational background for those students moving into our junior highs.
We have our first meeting set up on November's, oops, November 6th.
Okay, great.
Who are the South County schools?
The South County districts?
Oh, so not all?
No, South County would be Liberty, Wilmore, Two Rock, Danham, Wa, Old Adobe, and Liberty. So you'd say there's one, one, Liberty.
Yep, so we just want to make sure they're prepared for...
We will come back, probably with the first interim report, if not before, just to show the impact on our average daily attendance, and I'm working with Midge and Donna on, on that report. Midge, Paige, and Donna.
Really, that's going to take a while.
It's going to take a while.
You can't take that personally. This isn't...
At least he's got me right.
All right, very good. Any other questions on that?
No.
No? All right, so, future business, next regular board meeting's going to be October 28th. Will we be bringing anything out of the ordinary, or should we expect an honorable?
Are you expecting?
I am, I was thinking that it's time to probably update you on the GATE program and the smashing success that is going on over at McKinley Elementary School.
Hey, it was always welcome.
And eventually, probably not at our next meeting, but possibly at the one after that, we need to start talking about the one-to-one rollout and timelines around that.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Sooner the better.
Okay.
And Fief, just so you know, it's close to Halloween, so the members always has to dress up in a costume.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Long time tradition.
Jane, just nothing about the GATE program? I guess this, what is the first sixth grade class, so...
We will, we will include some information around that in our report.
Okay.
Okay.
I know there's some of those parents are...
Yep.
We just, we just visited, it was...
Okay, so we're going to go, I don't need to adjourn in closed session, will you accomplish closed session, or is that closed session? So the action items to be heard in closed session, this is kind of the, the part of the, I guess, I'm going to go through, we're going to vote, these are four, four student matters that were discussed, just so people watching, how we know this here, understand, disciplinary actions that were discussed in closed session, which disciplinary actions aren't discussed in closed session with Mr. Rose, and these will be the action items of, which will be the result of those discussions on these disciplinary actions. Kind of tangled that one up, but, we talked about it back there, I don't want you to think I'm going to read something that, or we have any idea what we're talking about, and we're going to vote on it. This is all related to items that we discussed in closed session. Case four, case has been presented to the board, the student did commit an expelable act as defined by the California Education Code, recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment at district school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of 2014-2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, that passes five zero. Sue, I have all the things here. Case five, case has been presented to the board, the student did commit an expelable act as defined by the California Education Code, recommended motion is the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment at district school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of 2014-2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Case six, case has been presented to the board, the student did commit an expelable act as defined by the California Education Code, recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment at district operated school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of 2014-2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, subject to use counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, vote. And the final one, case seven, case has been presented to the board, the student did commit an expelable act as defined by the California Education Code, prior disciplinary actions have been attempted, were not successful, and or due to the nature of the act, the presence of the pupil causes a continuing danger to the physical safety of the pupil and others. Recommended motion is for the board to support the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in a county-operated court and community school. Student's expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of 2014-2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, subject to use counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. And that, thankfully, is all those, and with that, I will intercan a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.